Semi annual review by University of St. Mary's.
Mr. Merritt Commission, I'm honored to introduce President of University of St. Mary's, Sister Diane Steele for our first update from St. Mary's that was added during the Commission goal-setting session this year, and we've been gracious enough to have Sister Diane come, so why don't you come up, sit down, and tell us what's going on?
I'd be glad to, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for inviting us.
All right.
I'm pleased to announce that the University of St. Mary is continuing to grow up, and we apologize for the parking problems on Hughes. This year, we welcomed a record class of freshmen, as well as transfers. So, right now, we have 700 undergrads on the main campus, another 120 doctoral students, both the Doctorate in Physical Therapy, and then we have 27 Masters in Nursing that are FNP, the Family Nurse Practitioners, and then we have another 15 Athletic Training, that's brand new. We are in the final stages of building our Doctorate in Occupational Therapy, so God willing, there'll be another 120. We'll take students in June of 2021 for that. So, we've gone through the Higher Learning Commission accreditation, and now we have to go through the accreditation for occupational therapy itself, so very excited about that. Our focus continues to be educating the whole person with the focus on education and healthcare. So, we continue to build out our healthcare programs. We're also pleased that we have a partnership with St. John's, like we've gone back home again. St. John's is no longer operating, and so they're allowing us the use of their operating suite and the old convent. I don't know how many have been the old convent at St. John's. It's down through the chapel on the other side. So, the operating suite is now where we're housing our simulation labs, and we just got a grant for $150,000, so we'll have the state-of-the-art simulation technology equipment. So, we have very high-definition mannequins in there. They do way more than I, as a theologian, ever want to know or see. But those that are... Then what we do is the students go through various scenarios, and then we have a classroom right there where they can debrief, what did they learn? So, it's better they practice on the mannequin than on you or me.
Right.
And in exchange, we educate one of their students, one of their nurses. We are pleased to say that somebody there who started there as a CNA is now in their last semester of getting an FNP, so really is growing, a homegrown nurse. And then in the old convent, those will be our exam rooms for the family nurse practitioner. If you've ever been in a convent room, they're all very small with the sink, so they work just perfect for an exam room. So, we're very pleased with that new relationship with St. John's, and once we get it all finished, we'll have a grand opening and invite you all.
Great.
We'd love to have you out to our sports. We have 22 varsity sports, and we invite you out to our Berkle Stadium to come see what's happening out there. We continue to grow our sports. You know, we're looking at what's next. Our next building project will probably be putting a building between the baseball field and the softball field. Right now, there's no restroom down there, you have to run up to the library. So, with 22 varsity sports, we have 500 athletes on campus. So, if I need them, I get the athletes and the nurses and the fine arts students, and I've got most of them. Those are three distinct populations that we take care of.
Great.
St. Mary is first and foremost into its students. We'd invite you, we're going to have a blessing for our newly renovated library. We now call it the Kelleher Learning Commons, it's named after Archbishop James Kelleher. And Nancy would remember the nasty orange that was in the old library, it's gone. So, the library has been totally redone, and libraries are no longer books. I kind of grieve that a bit, since I'm a book person, but all of our resources are really online now, and so we buy subscriptions rather than individual books.
Wow.
So, the library has been redone to a commons, it's all very flexible, and around the central core is what we call think tanks, where the students can study together, so they can take their phone or their laptop and hook up to the big TV by Bluetooth, and then work on their projects together, and then they have a whiteboard on the side. And then upstairs is, we have renovated the Lincoln Collection and the Special Collections. No, as soon as that's done, we definitely want to show that off, because what we wanted to make sure is that if we're going to keep this Lincoln Collection, and we have one of the original 13 copies of the Thirteenth Amendment, a lock of Lincoln's hair, but probably what I find most moving in the collection are the estate documents, where it says, you know, mule, $15, young man, $30, old lady, $10. There's nothing that teaches the history of slavery like the documents that said they sold human beings.
Right.
And then we have built a classroom right onto the Special Collections, so they can take them from the rooms in which we preserve them, right into a room to teach with. That way, you can teach with the original documents as well. And hopefully, we can share that as well with high school students. Generally, when we bring students up, they're most impressed with the lock of Lincoln's hair. So, again, we want to very much be part of the city and the community with those, very excited about that. We're also excited that, once again, we have been named one of the best colleges in Kansas. Very excited about that. And then, as we look at our sports, we're participating in AI, so we don't have any full-ride athletic scholarships. At St. Mary's, to put it bluntly, you get money for being smart and being financially in need, because we believe that's our dedication. We still have about 44% minority, we are about 42% first-generation, and about 40% Pell Grant students. So, being a sister charity institution, a vention institution, we're always involved in how do you break that cycle of poverty. One of our great students, and he tells me I can brag on him, Juan Tierra Garcia graduated last year from Wyandotte, graduated from Wyandotte High School, came to St. Mary, double-majored in Biology and Chemistry, student body president, had a full ride to KU and to Oregon to do molecular biology.
Wow, that's awesome.
He is the first in his family to graduate from grade school.
Wow.
So, he will change the... what happens in his family from now on. So, when we see those, those are very exciting for us. We're very strong. We're very unusual in the fact that in most places, their biggest major is business, ours is biology, because of the strong healthcare focus. So, it's Biology, Business, and Psychology. Those are the students who got to organic chemistry and decided they weren't going to be doctors, or nurses, they didn't quite make it through. So, we are thriving and growing, looking to build more housing on campus, so figuring out where, how many, that's always that delicate number. We have two residence halls right now, so that means we have 300 students living on campus, and then we have another 500 living in the city. So, the economic impact of the university is significant, and we have 200 employees.
I have five St. Mary's students living across the street from me.
If they don't behave, let me know.
They're very quiet. I will, I warned them about that.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, so our economic impact on the city is significant, and then you consider that every time we have games or events, people come in, parents follow their students. So, when you're traveling from McPherson and Sterling, they often spend the night. So, we're... we help the hotel business and the food business as well.
Great.
So, we're very proud to be part of Leavenworth and be part of the first city, and I would be glad to answer any questions or curiosities you'd have.
I'm really glad you're here. It is such a big part of the city, and when we were doing our goal-setting session, we realized we'd been leaving you out all this time, so we're glad to have you here. When is the blessing of the library?
Ooh, can I email you that?
Yes.
Okay. It's under my phone, and I turned it off, Mr. Merritt.
You just had to keep it on silent.
Oh, I'm obedient, I ain't killing the baby.
I think the city and St. Mary University are continuing to strengthen their relationship, and I know the city manager last year reached out to one of your senior marketing classes, and they did some really good work, and came and presented to the Commission last May, and we've been very, very busy with the festival and other things, but we haven't forgotten those things that they recommended in terms of the appearance and image of the city.
We aren't using them.
And I think there's a pretty good... There is a good... We're going to talk about it sometime in the not-too-distant future, to see whether we can implement some of those recommendations, but I just wanted to provide that feedback to you.
Thank you. And anytime there's any project for our students, we would love to participate. It's great experience for our students, whether it's a small research project or internships, the more real-life experience we can give them, the stronger they will be when we send them out.
All right. That's good.
I think you may have said this, being anybody didn't catch it, what's your FTE, your full-time equivalent enrollment?
Altogether, we're 1,200.
1,200.
Because we also teach online and down at Overland Park.
Okay.
We have eight masters that operate out of Overland Park.
Thank you.
Later this evening, Ms. Christie Lee, the Director of our Leavenworth Convention and visitor bureau, is going to talk to us. One of the events that's coming up is a celebration of the 160th anniversary of Lincoln's visit to Leavenworth, December 3rd through 6th. I guess that's when we're going to be celebrating it, so if there's any collaboration we can do with St.
Please have her contact us.
Yeah, St. Mary University, I was thinking that that would be good, and I haven't been in the collection, but I've seen certain artifacts from the collection, and it's quite a crown jewel of your university, but also the fact that it's in the city of Leavenworth.
And we want the city to claim it.
Right.
As this has come to St. Mary's and see what the city has to offer. So, definitely, please put her in contact with us.
Absolutely.
We would love to do that and be part of that.
Okay.
Well, I just want to say thank you for everything that you're doing for the community and the students as well. You're doing a great job there, very well-behave outside of school as well, too, and they are just great to work with, so.
Thank you. They volunteer for a lot of other things, like Lions Club.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they're great.
We do Lions Club, but our students like to do service, and we insist that they do service.
That's good.
So, we think being of service to your neighbor is just constitutive of being a good human being.
Yeah.
So, that's... they all have to do service in some fashion.
Yeah, so we appreciate it. Mr. Merritt?
No, I have nothing, other than I appreciate the way St. Mary's has been growing.
Yeah.
There, for a long time, it seemed like it was sort of stagnant, and I think with you coming on the scene, has made the big difference out there.
So, we... Well, we're a business, and you grow or die.
Right.
That's... You know, it sounds... My faculty don't like those words, but that's just reality.
But it's true.
Yes, and I would invite you to come to our ballgames, and please come up to our suite. We'd love to host you up there. Just drop me an email, and I'll have your tag ready to welcome you. We watch the games in comfort.
I'm an old lacrosse player. Two of your newest teams are the lacrosse teams, right?
They are.
Both men's and women's. Have you watched any games, or?
Oh, yes. I have to show up at some of each game.
All right. Yeah, and that's in the spring, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good.
Yep.
I need to get out there a couple of days.
I've never seen lacrosse, I have to check it out.
Yeah.
Well, the boys' and girls' games is very different, the men's and women's. The men beat each other up when the girls have an ass. I may have oversimplified that.
No, 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 it's... Good summary.
So, we're a proud member of the community, and the more that you can help us, sometimes we are so busy, we put our heads down, and you need to call us out and say, please help with this, please join us with this, we would love to.
That's great.
And I think the more that we can get the town to come out to St. Mary's and build that town-gown relationship, we would love that.
It's so different from the ivory tower reputation that St. Mary had for so long. Nobody even knew what went on, what went on up there behind the walls.
Uh-huh, behind the trees.
Behind the trees, yeah.
So, that's why we put a big sign out front, we now have our big... On the Brick Road, we now have a big archway out there saying, "We're back here."
Yeah.
That's awesome. Well, we appreciate you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Sister Diane. Bye-bye.
Next item on the agenda, bee discussion. Hold on, Mrs. Steve Jack.
Mr. Merritt Commission, some time ago, a resident came to a City Commission meeting and inquired about beekeeping in the city limits of Leavenworth. Rather than getting into the actual nuts and bolts of whether we do an ordinance, whether we model it off of, we decided the first step would be some information. So, Julie's put together some information, I'll let her share, and then we reached out and were able to get ahold of an expert to answer just some questions about bees that you may have or be keeping. So, I think the goal tonight is information, get it out in the public, see what feedback we get. Not looking for a consensus to draft an ordinance at this time, but just to sort of start the conversation and see what we can do. So, I'll turn it over to our Director of Planning and Community Development, Julie Hurley.
Thanks. So, like Paul said, as you recall, a couple of months ago, we had a request from the citizen regarding beekeeping in city limits. Right now, our regulations specifically prohibit beekeeping in residential areas except for property zone R125, which is our large lot, more agricultural-type zoning district. Those properties are going to be more out west, in the west side of town, so the more rural part, not in the more heavily populated areas. So, we had taken a look at what some other cities around the region have done. I reached out to the Kansas State Extension Office and the Northeast Kansas Beekeepers Association to get some ideas on cities that have regulations that currently deal with this, so I've included a few of those in your packet. From Lincoln, Nebraska, that was one that the Extension Office directed me to. Theirs has been in place for quite some time and was drafted by an expert, entomologist on the university staff up there, I'm an expert in beekeeping, and has been used as a model for a lot of other cities in drafting their own regulations. I included the City of Lawrence, Overland Park, and Prairie Village, and those were all ones that I was pointing to by the Northeast Kansas Beekeepers Association, that a lot of their members are dealing with and living in those cities. So, that's all been provided to you. This is Sharon Dobish, she's a former honeybee expert with the Kansas State Extension Office, so she can speak a little bit about what you might expect and seeing with bee behavior when they're kept in residential areas, and what some concerns might be with that type of activity.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, and I can give you a little bit of my background, too. I grew up with bees, my grandfather had them, and I joke around that I either blame or credit him with me becoming an entomologist. I have a master's degree in entomology for 26 years, and I am this close to being done with my PhD in entomology, so I'm very close. I pretty much have writing and defense left.
Through K-State?
Through K-State. My master's is also from Kansas State University, and then I spent 16 and 1/2 years as the Extension Specialist at Kansas State University, doing the beekeeping work there, so. And the model regulations that you talked about out of Lincoln, that was by Dr. Marion Ellis, he's retired there. He actually was the state apierist for the state of Nebraska for several years before they got rid of his position in the state, and he had to go get it back and get a PhD to reapply for his job in Extension, so he had been doing bees for 30, 40 years as well.
Could you talk a little bit about beekeeping in the city, bee behavior? I think this is kind of new to us, so sort of what could you expect?
Sure. Really, when you keep bees in town, the first fear for a lot of people is suddenly they're going to feel like they're inundated with bees in their yard, and they fear for their kids and their pets, things like that, and really, you don't really see a lot of bees just suddenly, like one day there's none, and then the next day, because your neighbor puts in a hive, you've got 200 in your yard. It doesn't work that way. Most beehives at the peak could easily have 30,000, 40,000 bees in them, but only a small portion of those actually go out and forage, because there's so many jobs within a hive, so there's nurse bees, there's guard bees, there's those that tend the queen, there's other things that some of those bees are doing, and the bees that actually go out and do the foraging tend to be older bees, and so they are the ones that have gone through all these other stages and are now the foragers. And literally, they only live a couple of weeks, because they're literally working themselves to death those last couple of weeks of their lives, going out foraging and bringing back nectar to make honey and do other things in the hives. So, they go out, they usually just, you know, they get in... The most of the time, you're going to see them are things like when linden trees are in bloom, because then sometimes you can hear those trees before you see them. At times, there's so many critters in there, and it's not just bees, it's the beetles and the wasps and everything else that are attracted to linden trees. So, there are a couple of plants like that, where you may see higher populations, all congregated in one area, and that tends to kind of spook people once in a while. Most of the time, bees only travel within two miles of their hive, so, you know, one of the things that they do, they look for nectar in the trees, the shrubs, and the flowers, so it's not just flowers that they're visiting. They get pollen from different plants, pollen is very important to nutrition of bees. I like to liken it to having their fruits and vegetables. They can't just survive on one thing alone, the different plants provide different pollens, which have different nutrients. And then, they need water, so water source has become an issue. Over the years, as an Extension Specialist, that was probably my number-one complaint from homeowners. They would call and say, my... You know, especially birders, they have bird baths out, and they would complain that their birds can't get to the bird bath, because there's so many bees in it, because the bees were after the water. There are ways to work with that, but it's very frustrating for those that put out a bird bath, who want to watch birds, and so those kinds of things get frustrating for them. Home swimming pools sometimes become an issue, especially, again, when there's kids and pets around those home pools. But beekeepers keep a substantial water source, usually even within their own property, that helps reduce those complaints a lot, and there's ways that people with the bird baths can deal with water sources by putting out buckets of water, sort of laced with sugar, so that the bees are more attracted to those than to their bird bath. So, there's different things that can be done to handle those situations, but usually, if beekeepers are very attentive, have additional water out, especially in times of drought, or, you know, during the summertime, a regular beehive can go through a quart of water a day, so that's a lot of water for bees. Most people don't think they can drink that much water, but they really can. So, a lot of beekeepers will either keep their own bird baths in the backyard and put rocks in them, so that they can perch and drink. Some beekeepers will get, like, the little running fountains, things like that, water gardens, to try to help out with their bees.
There was something in one of the ordinances about fences, too. The height of a fence, would that be... I think that was a requirement of one of these.
It is. The height of the fence, and usually putting that around the hives, is helpful in that when bees first come out of their hive to take a flight, they orient, and so if they have to come out and go straight up, when they come back, they're going to know that they come in and go straight down to get back into their hive. What that does is prevent them from coming out, the landing of the hive, and going straight out, and potentially running into people, kids, pets on a sidewalk, so that they don't, you know, accidentally bump into them, and then somebody gets stung just because the bee got startled. I've seen it happen in my own backyard. My son, one time, was just walking through the backyard, bee got startled when it bumped into his face, and he got stung right by the eye, and his face swelled up, so those kinds of things do happen, and it's devastating for people who don't understand that that can be just a localized reaction.
So, what is the motivation for, you know, typical citizen who is a beekeeper? Is it economic from the standpoint of creating honey, or... And, you know, selling that, or... There's got to be some other reasons, too.
There's a lot of reasons why people like to keep bees. Some of them, if they're into gardening, it's the pollination factor in their gardens. For some people, they just enjoy watching them come and go from the hive, it's just a hobby for pure enjoyment. Some people raise them for producing honey and maybe selling it at farmer's market, having a little side hobby. There's also additional products from the hive, so wax, bee bread, things like that. With wax, beekeepers can make soaps and lotions and lip balms, so some people do it for that. Some people even keep them for medicinal reasons, some people with MS and things, will do bee sting therapy. There's a lot of different reasons to have hives.
So, with the beehives being in the residential area, have you received an increase in complaints of bee stings?
No.
Oh, okay.
No. In fact, when... Several years ago, when the Kuns of Beekeeping Group started in Manhattan, hives popped up all over the city of Manhattan, I got zero extra calls.
Oh, wow.
In fact, the only call... In fact, I got fewer calls, because everybody used to call me for swarms. Now, there's all these beekeepers out there getting swarms, so I even stopped getting swarm calls, because the beekeepers were going out and getting... Advertising their bee groups and going out and getting the bee swarms for me, so I didn't even have to field those calls and try and farm those out anymore. So, actually, with the increased number of beekeepers, and once the community got to know they were there, a lot of times, if a beekeeper is interested in collecting bee swarms, they will let the local police and fire and emergency services know, so that if they get a bee swarm call, they have a list of local beekeepers who are willing to take care of that.
Pollination of beekeepers, like flowers in and around the yard, I understand that, but from the overall standpoint of the community, are there benefits? Is there a benefit to, I mean, a community? Like, there's not really a community benefit, is there, or?
Um, they're... Yeah, I was going to say, they can be just nicer plants, you know, all the plants are pollinating.
Right.
Yeah, you know, they aren't just going to stay in somebody's backyard, they're going to go out and about. Gardens, they pollinate several garden crops and help those grow better, but just a lot of time, people relate pollinators with community health, because a lot of times, if people are conscious of pollinators in an area, they look at trying to reduce pesticide use and things down those lines that do help increase other aspects of health and community.
That's good, thank you.
Something interesting, I thought, was your Africanized bees. Has that been a problem in Kansas?
No. We've had over, like I said, since I started at Kansas State University in 2001, and when Leroy Brooks retired, I took over the bee thing responsibilities in 2004. And since then, we've had one major complaint, and it was clear in southeast Kansas, and it was because a new beekeeper ordered queens that were partially Africanized out of Texas. So, knowing, you know, responsible beekeepers now have been educated to that. Since that time, probably six to eight years ago, I'm starting to lose track of time, because so many things have happened so quickly in the last several years, but beekeeper... Queen rearing classes have been offered even here in the state of Kansas, where beekeepers went, and more people are locally raising queens, and beekeepers are aware of the Africanized honeybee issues further south, and so they try to avoid those if they are requeening. And there's also, the Northeast Kansas Beekeepers Association has a fun day at the beginning of June that really raises awareness, and I always told people, if they called and wanted to get started in beekeeping, you should go to this workshop, because it's hands-on, they have a lot of great workshops, it's there in Lawrence, so it's usually close for a lot of people up in this area. Classes range from how to assemble equipment to lotions and lip balms, to how to find your queen in your hive. We've had people talk about queen rearing and wax sculpting, and they do a swarm demonstration, and all kinds of fun things, and it's hands-on. So, people who attend are encouraged to bring their, you know, their helmet and hive tools and join in, participate.
Since you took over in 2004, has there been an increase in the number of people that are beekeepers within the state?
Hugely. Starting around 2013, 2014, we have actually increased the number of bee groups in the state of Kansas, probably doubled. When I first started, we had the Northeast Kansas Beekeepers Group, we had the South Central Group, there was a group out west, and the Kansas Honey Producers Association, which is a statewide association. We now have a lot of smaller groups all over the state. There's a group in Emporia, a group that meets at Pittsburgh, Manhattan has a group, and there are several even subgroups for special interest beekeepers, because there's different styles of hives. Langstroft is the most popular, but down in South Central, there's a group that really gets into top-bar hives, and so they have kind of a... Of the South Central Beekeepers Group, there's also kind of a subgroup of top-bar beehivekeepers that work together and help each other maintain their hives and learn how to use them and things like that. It's just a different style of beekeeping, so...
Is that something that the interest has grown in Kansas? Do you think that's... Is that something that's happening in other states during the region?
Everywhere.
Okay.
Yeah. When the interest really started peaking and growing, bee supply companies had a hard time keeping both equipment and bees in stock nationally. It's been growing for quite a while. Yes.
Sort of an awful lot question, but I need to ask. Excuse me. Take, for instance, you've got a hive or two hives out in your backyard, you've got plenty of room, you meet all the qualifications, and a child is out there playing, or they're playing catch, he's not looking, he runs into this hive, knocks it down or knocks it over. Will these bees swarm, and how much damage can that child receive?
Um, again, it depends on the bees, because, you know, they all have different temperaments, I'm going to say, but by and large, most of them will sting a couple times, and if the child can at least run away, they won't follow them very far. If you had Africanized honeybees, on the other hand, those things would follow you, cross the yard, clear down the driveway. My experience with most hives of bees, even if they're pretty rattled, if you walk six to eight, 10 feet away, they quit following you. So, if they can get away, probably they'll have several stings, and maybe even, you know, be good precautionary to go to the doctor. We always recommend 10 to 15 stings, have it checked out, just in case, because anybody Um, because anybody can develop an allergy at any time. I know people who were beekeepers for thirty years and then they got what they called the golden sting. And suddenly they swell up and go into anaphylactic shock when they get stung and they've had to get rid of their hives. Um, it's devastating for those folks who that's what they've always done. But it can happen at any time to anybody. Um, so, but most times if you can at least get away a few feet, they start backing down. It's, you know, they feel threatened when you're right on top of them.
Right, right. Well, with that and the commotion of their hive.
Right. And some of it does a little bit depend on maybe what the child is wearing. If they're in an all-black outfit to the bees, that's kind of like a bear or something, they may be a little more aggressive than if they're in lighter colored clothing.
There's a lot of good um, information in here and I would think that maybe we might think about looking at regulations and talking to, I mean, there is a pollinator, pollinators group right here in Lubbock.
Yeah.
So getting information out to them, kinda like we did with the massage establishments where we had experts that work, work with them. If there's beekeepers here that we could be showing this information to.
And since it has experienced an increase in interest and the number of beekeepers, I mean, cities and municipalities have had to deal with it in terms of developing some ordinances and regulations, correct?
Right, correct. Um, I can tell you since at least two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, I've had calls from multiple small towns around Kansas saying, you know, we're looking at this because there's interest and right now our ordinance prohibits.
Sure.
You know, what can you tell us? And I've, you know, sent information and answered questions for years on those kinds of things.
All right. Uh, my question was very similar to Commissioner Dedekes. Uh, I think at this point, I thank you for the information, I learned a lot. I thought, you know, I knew a lot about bees like probably most people do. Uh, but I think it's something that we as the commission and staff, uh, we let's sit and let's see what we hear from uh, uh, you know, various citizens. We've actually only had one citizen come forward about it. We do have ordinances in place and I think there's a reason for them to be in place. Um, and I'm not necessarily a favor right now, let's move on to changing the ordinance.
Right.
Uh, because there's, you know, people may feel uh, on different sides of the issue. And let's just, uh, just sit back and uh, see what we hear from the public. Uh, I don't think we need to study it anymore, or I don't think that we need to make any drastic changes at this point.
At least we have the information for one, if we, if we do.
Yeah, I think we have, we have information and I don't think it requires any action on our part or anything.
Yeah, and I'm glad to help.
Yeah, and I appreciate what you've done and the knowledge that you've been part of.
Sure. And I've at least given you a business card, if you need more, I can leave them, you can call me at any time. I'm now in private industry, but I'm just down the road a little bit in Lenexa with the company I work for now. But I do kinda still commute between Manhattan and Lenexa, so it's pretty close.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Steve Jet, send my annual report by Leavenworth County Development Corporation.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to be here again. And I'll get started. Here we go. Um, all right. Uh, I'm gonna spend probably a little less time than I had in previous presentations on the unemployment rate. Um, it hasn't done significant things um, here locally. Uh, the last actually few years, it's been in the just under four to just under five percent. And, and right now, Leavenworth's unemployment rate is four point oh. Uh, the city of Leavenworth, that's the county, city of, of Leavenworth's at four point five. And then the balance of county is, is just under four, I think three point six. Uh, surrounding counties, Wyandotte County at five point four, Douglas County, so we're under Wyandotte County. Uh, but a little above Douglas County at three point seven. Um, Johnson County's at three point three, Jefferson County's at three point three. Uh, but what was interesting and what jumped out on, on that map, uh, when I saw it a few weeks ago when it was first released and these are unemployment rates in July, is Atchison County. And they are at seven point one percent unemployment. And um, I can't recall that ever happening, that, that so high. And so it didn't take very long to uh, uh, find out why. And that is, there's a wire harness company that worked with um, uh, the Harley plant that shut down on the Missouri side. And so uh, there was an increase in the beginning of this year as they were downsizing. And uh, I'm sure that that seven point one percent in Atchison can be at least in part attributable to uh, that wire harness company. Um, now, uh, what we do, the Business Retention Expansion Program, Lisa Hack on our team has uh, uh, had forty-four existing business visits to date. Uh, I think as I recall, twelve, twelve and a half years ago, when I came, that, that first year, two thousand and seven, uh, we had been calling on at most a couple dozen, but maybe eighteen or twenty companies a year, some of the key companies in, in town. And uh, over time, we bumped that up to, uh, I think there was a year when Cecilia Harry called on a hundred and twenty companies. Um, and uh, oftentimes, there's not a lot that's changed from one year to another. And Lisa's responsibilities have been sort of broadened. And so I'm less concerned about the, the number of visits and more concerned about the quality of visits. And so in two thousand and nineteen, uh, we've assisted ten companies with grants, loans and tax savings. And that's something that happened about five years ago, six years ago, we started uh, uh, counting and quantifying our um, uh, impact, positive impact on those companies. And so um, we've saved one million, five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars for those ten companies. So out of the forty-four um, existing businesses that we've visited, we went, uh, we did a deeper dive into the, the ten companies and um, uh, have saved those companies one point five million. A lot of that is capital investment that's happening at Cereal Ingredients and continues to happen at Cereal Ingredients. And, and that company has not increased their footprint for a couple of years, but inside they're adding lines and, and increasing employment. Their employment is, is close to two hundred now. So the capital investment, the savings were one point five million, the capital investment is over fifteen million of those ten projects. And those projects have resulted in twenty-nine new jobs and fifty-two retained jobs. And uh, seven of those companies are located, as you might expect, in the city of, of, of Leavenworth. Uh, since two thousand and thirteen, when we started counting, um, we've saved Leavenworth County companies eight million, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. And we continue to quantify those savings when we assist in the, um, we're a little different than most EDCs. Um, when, when we hired Ashley Harden from CBiz, she had an accounting background. And uh, she had a lot of familiarity with those state programs, the, the Kansas Industrial Training Retraining Program, the High Performance Incentive Program, the PEAK Program, uh, and others. And then obviously we have a Grow Leavenworth County, uh, that uh, Taylor coordinates the activities of that. And then we've added some, some micro grants. But we, we don't just point people in the right direction and say, uh, you may be eligible for a grant. Here's Jim's name in Topeka or Sally's name, here's the phone number, go call him, good luck. Uh, we actually will write the grants for them and in the case of Holyfield Winery in Baser, um, we are administering the, the grant. And that's probably the only grant that we have where we get a small portion of, of admin fees. So uh, the value to, obviously there's a value to the companies. The value to our organization and the impact that we have on the county is that that eight point five million uh, is retained within the county and within the city. And so uh, we think that um, is a, a positive for not only the companies, but also uh, the citizens of the county. Um, now, business recruitment, marketing and assistance, kinda the other hat we wear. Uh, this year to date, in two thousand and nineteen, we've had forty-three leads, twenty-four prospects, uh, three business visits and, and a location. And I put that location, it sounds like, it sounds like, well, every time we have a location, uh, it must be something major like bringing a, a central bag or a cereal ingredient to town. And what we mean by that though, is that if Mr. Breeze is looking for uh, real estate and we can find that, then we may, may count that. But we're gonna uh, let you know that that's, that's the level of it is. You, you will know when we get a company with a hundred or two hundred jobs, we will uh, because you, you will be a part of that process. And I'm gonna talk about some of the projects that we have. You can see where the lead sources come from, eleven this year, um, come from the Kansas Department of Commerce. Fifteen from the Kansas City Area Development Council, thirteen directly through LCDC. And then we've had four that have come either uh, to the city and on to us or referred by the chamber or uh, Main Street. Um, now, the next three slides are.
Steve, could you go back to that slide for me?
Uh-huh.
Yep. Um, just in terms of the number of visits, I mean.
Yes.
Two thousand and seventeen, there were eleven, two thousand and eighteen, going down five, three this year, we're not finished with two thousand and nineteen. Can you, I mean, is there, should we be concerned about that from the standpoint of a decrease in the number of visits or?
Um, actually, I, and I've thought about that, I'm, I'm more interested in the quality of the projects. And I think the quality of the projects are um, superior to what they were in years past. Now, I will acknowledge though, that we have spent a lot of money on marketing and we've upped our game and, and I would stand by that. But uh, just because we've spent more in marketing, it, it, at least in two thousand and nineteen, has not resulted in, in eighty, ninety, a hundred, a hundred and ten leads. So the leads haven't increased significantly. But I think the quality of the leads definitely have. And that's more of a factor of the size of business parks that we have, so. Um, now, uh, Project Pedal, the first two are projects that are still, uh, we're still active in, uh, but uh, maybe sort of back burner. Leavenworth uh, is probably more on the back burner uh, in the county than it was when we first submitted our uh, information. But Project Pedal was one. And here's what's exciting to me about this, is that we never would have been able to submit pro, for Project Pedal. And some of these that I'm gonna go through, we just wouldn't have without the Leavenworth Business and Technology Park or the Tonganoxi Business Park. They would have been a lead, but they wouldn't have been a project. So Project Pedal, fifty to sixty acre greenfield site, five hundred and twenty thousand square foot building. Uh, we submitted both the Tonganoxi and Leavenworth Parks. Unfortunately, right now, at least, they're focused on a different community, one community. Uh, although none have been eliminated and that comes from the State Department of Commerce. So they've let us know that if we haven't heard anything in the last two months since we've submitted two or three months for Project Pedal, uh, it's because they're focused on, on a different community. Um, kinda the same thing with Silver Rhino, this comes from the Kansas City Area Development Council. All they were looking for is a ten thousand square foot building or a ten acre greenfield site. We proposed Gary Carlson, Abel's Field and the Tonganoxi Business Park. And were told that they're first gonna consider existing buildings, as they, they told us they, they would. Um, or uh, before they move to the ten acre site. So if they can find a, a ten thousand square foot building that, that meets their need on ten acres, that's what they'll do. Now, Project Summit also came from the Kansas City Area Development Council, also needed a lot of acreage, thirty acres, uh, for a three hundred and fifty thousand square foot building. And what we did uh, on that, and, and Paul and Taylor can attest to this, uh, Project Pedal, Project Summit, uh, several of the others, uh, we've put together uh, proposals or responses to uh, RFPs or RFI's, requests for information, that have been maybe a dozen or two pages long or even longer in, in spreadsheet information, filling up the cells. Um, uh, and answering those questions and then maybe as many as five hundred pages of attachments. So these are really large documents that we're submitting. And we typically get anywhere from uh, five to ten days, about a week to respond. So uh, when these come in and we see that, oh, it's one of those, then uh, we reach out to the city, we reach out to all the utilities and give them a heads up that we're gonna be working as a team to uh, put, put these RFI responses together. What was cool about this one was, uh, because we've got these two new parks and we had a specific parcel that we were interested in putting a, a three hundred and fifty thousand square foot building in Tonganoxi. And then we have a little more flexibility in Leavenworth. Uh, we utilized GBA in Tonganoxi and then Bartlett and West in, in Leavenworth to show how a three hundred and fifty thousand square foot building might be configured on the property. So we took our, our site plan of the Leavenworth Park and dropped a three hundred and fifty thousand square foot building. And I think that makes our uh, response and proposal stronger than it has, has been in the past. Uh, Project Local needed twenty acres and they were gonna squeeze a four hundred thousand square foot facility on it. Uh, we responded to uh, one of those major RFI's for the two new business parks. And then we're working with a builder who could lease that back. The, the, uh, the proposal talked about a, a partnership between the company and the community. And we interpreted that as, uh, they may not necessarily just wanna buy property and build themselves, but may want somebody to build for them. And um, uh, the city's likely not going to do that, although that would be a possibility. But, uh, but we were looking for a builder and so we worked with McCow and Gordon and they brought in Van Trust, uh, who have agreed if Project Local comes this way, that they'd build the hun, or the uh, four hundred thousand square foot building um, and lease it back on a long-term lease to the company. So that gives us another option, another tool in our toolbox. Uh, Project Marshmallow, that's a Kansas Department of Commerce project, a fifty thousand square foot building or a three to five acre site. We don't have the building, but we've got the site. Uh, they needed to be within twenty miles of KCI though. And so we submitted Gary Carlson, uh, and which we have uh, uh, sites that size, as well as the new Leavenworth Park. And so we're waiting on a response, that's just a few weeks old. Uh, Project Winter, um, they were interested in building a hundred thousand square foot facility specifically in Leavenworth. And Paul, Taylor and I have met with the company to discuss options. Uh, Project Franklin is another uh, uh, project that we're working directly with the company. They're also looking for uh, give or take uh, around a hundred thousand square foot building. Um, and we're currently working closely with the, the company on options in Leavenworth. Uh, the company is uh, hiring an architect and uh, looking at specifically the Leavenworth Park, because that's where they, they wanna go. Yes, sir?
So when you submit a project, how long does it normally take to hear a response back?
That's a, a fair question, uh, and the answer is, it depends.
Okay.
Uh, sometimes it could take, um, well, some of these projects, uh, I have a small project that we started in two thousand and fifteen and it looks finally like we'll, we'll see something. And it's just, it's like an acre on, on K seven.
Oh, wow.
Um, and so, uh, so sometimes it, it doesn't take. But if we don't hear something, I mean, if it's just crickets for two months or three months, then it's probably not gonna, not gonna happen. And so that's why projects like Pedal and Silver that are two or three months, they've told us, well, we're, we're looking at some other things, are probably not something that I should, uh, it's still on our list and we're ready to go and we still have files on it. But uh, the ones that are more interesting, interesting to us are the ones that we've continued to have a dialogue and we actually hear back from the company. And as long as we're talking back and forth, even if it takes a year or eighteen months to happen, then uh, at least we know we're, we're still heading in the right direction, but.
When one of our parks is not selected, do you ever get feedback, general or otherwise, in terms of what, you know, why it wasn't selected? Why are the Leaven, the Business and Technology Park in Leavenworth or Gary, Gary Carlson or the, you know, the, the Business Park in the? or the, you know, the, the Business Park in Tongonoxi are not selected? Do you ever get any feedback in terms of why?
Occasionally, but not as much as we'd like. We had a, one of our first visits, just the, the year that, well, last year, you all cut the ribbon.
Right.
We showed project gear, I think it was right after the, the ribbon cutting and the ceremony, a company out of Texas, and they wanted to build a distribution center. And, and they basically told us they liked the park, but they didn't like the twelve-stop, the signal on K seven to get to I seventy. On the other hand, Cereal Ingredients has that same-
Right.
-issue, and it's never bothered Bob Hatch and those guys. So if, unless you have, I mean, if you've got one or two or three trucks a day coming and going, or four or five, we're probably okay. But in terms of distribution, where you might have eight to ten an hour, well, yeah.
Yep.
Then it's gonna be a problem in the north. Tongonoxi may be better-
Right.
-settle for that, 'cause there's zero. You have a stop sign, and then you're three miles and you're on I seventy. We oftentimes know upfront that rail is preferred or rail is required, and so we know, you know, why that might happen. We did have a project last year that, actually, at the end of last year, early this year, that it was not about the park, it was not as much about local incentives and the package that, that Paul and you all put together, it was about state incentives. And so that's one of the reasons I'm gonna talk just briefly about. David Tolan, the Secretary of Commerce, is coming in day after tomorrow, on Thursday, for the whole day. And so we'll have a chance to dialogue. And of course, it's not up to him, it's up to the Kansas Legislature and the governor. But a lot of the programs have gone away, and a lot of the, the recruitment staff has not been replaced. And so they're starting to try to build back the, the Kansas Department of Commerce, which will help them, them, Commerce, that agency, but ultimately, it helps, it helps us.
Well, that's, the state incentive topic, I think, is something that we could take a look at over the next couple of months as we get, put together our package for the state representatives. I know the county has been talking about, they talked about it last week at their, at their meeting. And so that, that could be something that we, you know, talk about as a commission and, and address when we talk to our representatives in either late December or early January.
Oh, absolutely. Well, there, there, there was, and even when I worked for the Department of Commerce, so, you know, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen years ago, we had offices in New York, recruitment offices. And the reason we had them in New York, Chicago, and LA, in addition to Japan and Brussels, was because they're closer to where the companies that might want to expand into Kansas are. So we could have staff here all in Topeka or in Kansas City area, but why not have some satellite offices?
The state actually had some satellite offices?
Yes. And so what happened is, we'd lose a, a, a staff position in Chicago, and it wouldn't be filled. And then we'd lose one in New York, and it wasn't filled. Then we lost the one in LA, and it wasn't filled. And so now we've got a gentleman in, in New York. We had a position that was filled in the last couple of years in, in Chicago, and then they're opening up the Los Angeles office and interviewing for, for that position. So that's a, a good start. It doesn't make sense to cut your recruitment staff if you're trying to sell. Your sales staff is kind of important in that marketing equation.
All echelons have to work together if we're gonna have success, so, okay.
Mr. Jack?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Griswold's question and follow-up. If all things being equal, you know, you've got the fifty, you know, I need a fifty acre site, or I need this, I need that, and there's two or three communities or parks that are vying for it, doesn't it always come down to incentives? Whoever's gonna give them the most money? We can cut to the chase, we can give them the demographics, we have this many potential employees, this educated populace. Yes, that's some information we provide, but the reality is, who's giving me the most money with many of these companies?
Kind of sort of.
I hate to be, you know, I wanna cut to the chase here.
Yeah, and my background is twenty years of workforce development at the state level. So I've given speeches and speeches, speeches about economic development, what's that? What's, you know, it used to be location, 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 well, it's labor, labor, labor. Yeah, kinda, but it starts with real estate, real estate, real estate. I mean, that's what we're talking about. Do you have a hundred thousand square foot building, or do you have land to put a hundred thousand square foot building? And then how much money are you gonna incent me? And so can you discount the land, the price of the land? And can you find a partner who'll build a building for me, and we could lease back? So incentives are-
I think they're one of the variables in the equation, but I, but I would tend to push back a little bit.
I would say it's the big X in the equation.
Well, I, I'm not so sure, I mean-
But I've seen here, eleven years, has always been, who's got the sweetest pot?
No, I don't, I don't-
I go back to that big one that we looked at last year that we're all deeply involved in, and the whole thing came down to who writes the biggest check.
And, and-
Not deny anything but that.
And I would say this, I'm probably between you guys here, but I would just say this, on that one, you are absolutely right. That whole thing was driven-
One hundred percent money.
Hundred percent, that was the whole thing.
Yeah.
Because they could've done that project any kind of metro area where you could get five hundred people. So it's, it's about money, and it's the combination of state and local together.
That's what I'm saying.
But there are others who, labor, workforce, the quality of workforce, the skill set in the workforce-
Twelve track, twelve traffic lights on K seven.
And, 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 and infrastructure, absolutely, so, yeah. Project West was actually a phone call, that was, it didn't start as a phone call, it was an email that came to me, Lisa, Taylor, and George in, in Tongonoxi. So it's a company in the western part of the, the country, and they're only looking at three to five acres to build a ten thousand square foot facility. And they have a, a lease that's still a couple of years away from them getting away. But they have an interest in the Kansas City area, and they got on the website, and they Googled, and they did their research, and a lot of the, they do a lot of research before they even pick up the phone or, or send us stuff. So, which is great, because we have the new website, and, and you guys have the new website. And so, so that, that, that cyber infrastructure is, is important to have equality. So they came in, even though it seems like a project that is, you know, two or three years down the road, and it may be, within a couple of years, I mean, within a couple of weeks after the original communication, they visited. And so Lisa, I was out of, I think I was out of the country, oh, August twelfth, yeah. So August twelfth, and Lisa hosted the tour of, of the two parks up here and the two parks in, in, since they only need three to five acres, we had probably a dozen different options for them, so. And I believe it went great, and so we're gonna continue to have that conversation. So with Project Winter, Project Franklin, Project West, and the next one, Project Clean, we're not working through a site-location consultant, we're actually working with the company, and that's, that's great. Project Clean, it's a commercial investor, they're interested in one to two acres in Leavenworth or Lansing along K seven. And so we toured the, the corridor on August eighth with Taylor and Matt Schmitz in, in Lansing. And I have no indication about which, I have some indication about which properties he likes, but he likes some properties in, in both communities. And so right now, he's focused on building one of these commercial ventures in another state. And as soon as that gets built, then he's gonna turn his attention back here. But it's likely that that will be, and, and we don't do a lot of the, the retail, you guys handle that, but they came through GBA and our organization, and so we pulled in Taylor and Matt. So I'm excited about Project Clean. Now, this is, it's not that hard to read, there's a lot of information on this. Usually I try to put it a little, make it a little bigger, but I wanted it all on one screen, because it references the Newmark Grub Zimmer study that you all did, was it a year ago, maybe? Yeah, a year ago. Our Expectations, it was the last page on that study that you contracted with Zimmer to do. And in that, I'm not even sure we necessarily specifically asked for this information, but it was really valuable to, to me, and I think to Paul and Taylor. The number of inquiries that we ought to be getting for these new, new business parks, one inquiry per quarter. And I interpreted inquiry meaning they contact us directly, they inquire about it. And so Project Lock, which became Unilock down in Tongonoxi in two thousand sixteen, and then Project Push in Tongonoxi Galaxy, Project Thirty-two, Project Dawes, Project Winter in Leavenworth, Franklin in Leavenworth, and West in Leavenworth. And this is not, I didn't put projects like Project Clean in here, because I'm, I'm focused on just the new parks, just the new parks. So we've had quite a few inquiries, and maybe more than one per quarter. KCADC State Projects, these mega RFPs or RFIs, one response to the state in KCADC every six months, and we've had a bunch of them, and those are the really exciting ones. Superior, Trigger, Gear, Precision, Levitt, which was the USDA, Project Pedal, Silver Rhino, Summit, Eames, Project Local, and Project Marshmallow. And then Project Visit, so you, you know, we're happy that we did a nice job writing a book and responding to the RFI, but it's more important to get them on the site. And we had Project Lock, Trigger, Gear, Precision in Leavenworth, Winter in Leavenworth, Franklin in Leavenworth, and, and West in, in Leavenworth and Tongonoxi. And then become a finalist for a relocation project every eighteen months. Obviously, Unilock that located there in Tongonoxi was in two thousand seventeen, and Project Precision was at the beginning of, of this year. And we just mentioned that briefly a moment ago. And then completed deals, complete new project every twenty-four months. And Unilock in Tongonoxi, and we're working as hard as we can to get that first one in the Leavenworth Park. So I think we're on target. And so my expectations, I, we've had questions, I'm sure you all have questions about why do we invest? Why the county invest the money, why the city invest the money? And it takes a while, it, it just simply does. We didn't build it with three or four companies in mind that are all gonna break ground in the first or second month. But I think we've had enough activity, and, and that really leads to the, the location. So if we weren't having activity, then I'd, I'd have some concern. Briefly, we have a Port Authority LCDC Spec Building Program that got underway this year. Up to, it's a, up to a two hundred thousand dollar building loan. It's a second mortgage to a bank loan. The first project is in Lansing, four hundred North Main Street, and the eleven thousand square foot commercial and retail building. I, I think that the, the, the new building will be eleven thousand square feet. I think the building that's currently on there is about half that size. So what we're trying to do is take a property that's worth less than four hundred thousand dollars and incent the project so that that building either gets built on, well, basically gets raised, and a, a new building comes on that property that is, will increase property taxes and the, the, that will benefit the county and the city and all the taxing authorities. And so that property should be worth just under one point five million. And I thought we'd have it going by now, but the developer's completing some due diligence on the facility, mostly on the fact that some of the numbers came in a little differently, and so they had to make some architectural adjustments and stuff. But it still will be a, a property that'll be worth about one and a half million dollars. We're working on new signage at the Gary Carlson Park. It will look similar to the, the one that you all put at the Leavenworth Business and Technology Park. And so we're excited about that. It'll be about ten feet tall, so it'll be a little shorter. We've selected Midwest Sign Company out of Kansas City, Kansas, they were the low bid. We're waiting on a signature from Ron Mather, who is the property owner on that corner. And he's already agreed to us, but was just, I, I think we need to go back, well, we did go back to him just today. Lisa's been working with him to make sure he signs the permit application for the city. And then the Port Authority will vote on two bids next Wednesday for electrical work, because it will be a, a lit sign.
I have a question about-
Yes.
VAC mop, what's, what's going on with, 'cause they were supposed to move out, right?
Yes, and, and it was my understanding that they found a hundred thousand square foot building, and that they opted not to do a build-to-suit, but rather to, to find a building. And I believe there was only one building available in, in the geographic area, which is pretty tight around this area, maybe goes, it, it doesn't even go to metropolitan, but it goes south to maybe Lenexa, but it, it is a pretty, and, and it doesn't go on the Missouri side, so it's a pretty small area. But they found a building, I, I thought, in Shawnee. And it's my understanding, they've signed a, they signed about three or four or five months ago, a two and a half year extension on the existing building here. So I'm guessing that means that it's taking that long to order equipment. It's not something that you can just shut this down and-
Sure.
-take six months and build the new one. Prescriptions need to go out, and so there's gotta be, that has gotta be ready and tested. So they're gonna be here for at least a little while longer.
So their, their planning wasn't all that, I mean, 'cause they were, I mean, we're talking about, they were supposed to be leaving by this time, weren't they, when this was talked about, a year and a half or two years ago?
It's what we thought.
Well, it's good that they're still there, I just, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Reeves-Weidemann, what type, how long have they been there? What, what, what type of business is that?
They do plumbing supplies.
Okay.
So we've got a, a couple of the commercial ventures in, in Reeves-Weidemann and Fastenal, in addition to the CMOP and Cereal Ingredients.
Yeah, I knew, I knew about the other ones, I just didn't know about Reeves-Weidemann. Had they been there for a while, or?
Yeah, uh-huh, they're directly behind our building.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And how many employees at CMOP?
Over two hundred, it's been two hundred to two hundred and forty, I think, so split the difference, two twenty at any given time. Yeah, it's a lot of jobs.
Right.
But then, you know, it's different kinds of jobs, but pretty high-paying at Cereal Ingredients now. A, a company that, a couple of years ago was at a hundred, now they're at two hundred, so.
Yeah, I wish we could replicate what, what transpired in what was the mid-two thousands, right? About two thousand five, two thousand six with Cereal Ingredients?
Yes.
I mean, if we could clone that, we would be in great shape.
Yeah, but you know the reason why they came here in the first place is because we had a building. Now, they didn't locate in the building, but the building was the magnet. The building next door that they are currently in was the reason they came to look at the Gary Carlson Park. And then they tried to work out a deal to buy that forty thousand square foot building, didn't quite work. And so they thought, well, we're here, it's a nice park, we'll build our own. So they built forty thousand, and then five or six years later, they bought the forty thousand they originally attracted to. And then they added six thousand behind that. And then two years ago, they added seventy-five thousand to the forty thousand building that they originally built fifteen years ago, so.
And they've over-doubled their employees, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, they, yeah, they went from forty thousand square feet to a hundred and sixty thousand, and they've gone from fifty employees to, which is what they, they promised fifty-five to the Port Authority for that acreage. And, and so now they're close to two hundred.
How's Mr. Hatch doing, good?
He's doing great.
Okay.
He is absolutely doing great. I think he just had a birthday, so.
Okay, good.
And then the final slide, Marketing Events, third and fourth quarter of two thousand nineteen. A couple of them have occurred already, the Kansas City Area Development Animal Health Homecoming Dinner, took place August twenty-sixth, and then there's a Real Estate Council event at the K, at Kauffman Stadium during a ballgame, and the Royals actually won. Those tickets used to be really hard to get, and you- Those tickets used to be really hard to get when they announced it, you had to get right on it. And it wasn't as hard to get, but, but
Amazing.
It is amazing, but we made some contacts, and one of the contacts was a gentleman that I've known who talked about the potential. He's an attorney and works with companies on incentives, and talked about cyber, and he has some ideas, and so, cybersecurity and stuff, so we're going to talk. So, and that's why you go to those events. I mean, it's long-term, but then if you get a lead, the shorter term. So, we'll see what happens there. Tomorrow, we have our LCDC Golf Tournament. I understand some people at this table are playing.
Yeah, we'll be there. We're your ringers.
Okay. All right. And then, the day after that, the Commerce Secretary, Kansas Commerce Secretary, David Toland, I had been talking to him about coming to the county and maybe coming to a meeting, and I thought if we got him for a couple hours, that'd be great. And then, we found out we could have him the whole day. So, I got a breakfast at nine in the morning in Tongonoxie, then we're going to meet with the mayor of Baser and Leslie Riverola there, and the superintendent of schools. Then we're coming up, and you were all invited to the lunch, the LCDC Board Meeting, which will try to compress the business side of it so that we'll give David time to talk and answer questions. And then, we're going to the Leavenworth Correctional Facility, and then a tour of the fort, and in between, oh, and then he once said, we just added the Workforce Center. He asked about that because that's under his umbrella in the Kansas Department of Commerce. They run the workforce centers in the states. So, anyway, we have a full day of golf tomorrow and a full tour with the Commerce Secretary on Thursday. And then, there are other events, the SIOR Event, Real Estate Event in Kansas City at the end of September. There's a KCA DCED Alliance Luncheon that I attend typically seven or eight times a year. This is a particular note because there's a Senior Vice President of CBRE, so we'll get a chance to exchange business cards with a site consultant. We have a Site Consultant Premier Event, October 2nd and 3rd. Team Kansas Lunch with Secretary Toland in Chicago on October 17th, and another one in Boston on November 7th. Tongonoxie is doing a real estate event in their business park on November 1. And then, we have the Kansas City Area Development Council's Annual Meeting on November 8th. And I think we're going to, I talked to Paul about splitting a table there, and we'll reach out Thursday to the other communities. A couple of years ago, we had a couple tables, and we had representation from each of the other communities, and then last year, not so much. So, it may go back to Leavenworth and LCDC, but we'll have 10 seats at that, at that table. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You mentioned the Workforce Center. Which Workforce Center are you talking about?
The one on limit.
Okay.
Yeah, there are, yeah, yeah. I think, and actually, interesting enough, I was with the state
Right.
the day the ribbon was cut, so
I got it.
I had no idea I'd be in this position, but I was, I was in Leavenworth the day that they cut the ribbon on that. SRS had about two-thirds of the footprint
Okay.
and a third for workforce partnership.
Well, thank you for the information and questions. No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
See you tomorrow.
Good run, Dan.
My next item on the agenda, semi-annual report by Leavenworth Convention and Visitors Bureau.
CBD Manager, PTV will provide an update of activities from the CBD.
How you doing, man?
Hello.
What's that?
Love the website.
Oh, great, yes. I really do, too. It's a, it's a nice website and getting better all the time, so. Oh, we'll jump right into my semi-annual report here. Some of the administrative highlights, I thought I'd include some of those for you again. I probably won't read through all of them and that, just some of the things that we've, the Spring Media Showcase that we did in Wichita in April has really brought about some more connections with some of our travel writers and that, and we will actually be hosting two of them again next week on the 25th and then on the 27th. So, a fam tour is basically for a travel writer and that. So, we'll be working with them in the future. Actually, one of them is writing an article for the AAA Midwest section, so hopefully the January edition of that will have a two or three-page spread on Leavenworth. So, we'll show you that in the next year's report. Just a few other things, we did host the, the travel bloggers back on May 17th or 18th and that, the travel, seven travel writers that we hosted for the whole day, and we were, worked with the Kansas City, Kansas, and Bonner Springs on that, and we kind of hosted them for like four days here in the area, and that went over really well. Had a lot of posting on social media and a lot of return on investment for that. We actually, I turned that into the State Tourism Office for a possible marketing award. We'll see if it gets, there's quite a bit of competition for that, but we'll see what happens in October when, at the conference, and see if it brings about anything. But hopefully, keeping our fingers crossed that we'll win something from that. So, just looking forward, we've hired our new part-time person and that, so hopefully they will be starting this week, possibly on Thursday. So, and a couple other things there. The Kansas City Industria Industry Data, they put these out all the time and that, and actually, tomorrow morning, they are rolling out their new one. So, I won't be able to attend that, but I will get the report, and we'll incorporate some of the new information in next year's annual report when I give that to you, either in March or April and that. But always interesting to find out the tourism economic impact on that. And Kansas City, Visit KC does this report every two to three years. So, it'll be good to get some new, new statistics there from them, so. The State Division of Tourism actually hired Bridget Jobe, who is the Executive Director of the Visit KC Kansas CBD. She was there for almost 22 years and that, and they hired her for the new Tourism Director for the state. So, she took over that position starting on July 8th this year. Everybody's pretty excited about it because the prior Tourism Director for the state, they never really actually rehired for that position when Becky Blake left, and it went to, it was the Assistant Secretary for their Parks, or not Parks, for the Wildlife Parks and Tourism Department and that. She did a fabulous job, but it'll be great to have a Director of Tourism again, so looking forward to that. Kansas also has a new app that they rolled out not too long ago, so you can download the app now and find out. Their whole website is now, can be found on an app. The year-to-date occupancy for the state is right at 56.9%. The year-to-date ADR, average daily rate for a hotel, is $88.92. And then, the RevPAR, which is revenue per available room, is right at $50.58.
What does that mean?
The RevPAR, revenue per available room, how many rooms they actually sell versus how many rooms they have on, in their inventory.
Okay, so, I could do, so, it's a, you're spending an average of $89. If it's a $100 room, but at 56%, okay, I got it.
Yeah, so it's a, yeah, so it's a break, so, yeah. Only at 50, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we had, we had hired Mozmac Creative, a local company here, to produce a video for us, so would like to show that real quick for you.
Do we have drone?
Uh, do we have volume?
No.
No volume?
No.
Okay.
Want me to hum a song?
I have to speak here, but I have to come up.
Okay. No volume, so it's, I guess it won't have quite the
It's ass.
But anyway, we're pretty happy with it and that, so it's about a two-minute video, and they've done two for us so far. The first video was about a little, about a minute, and
That was the opening to the farmer's market
Right.
this year.
Yes.
Yeah.
It was.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, we were there, too. We were in the background, if you noticed us.
No, no, I saw you there.
That was a good day.
Yeah.
They had a, the band was really nice. But they did, you know, use drone footage or footage and that, so that was pretty cool.
Is this on the website?
It will be.
Okay. With sound?
What's that?
With sound?
With sound, yes.
I look forward to it. It's still good.
Yeah, we'll actually do some social media with it, too. I'll post a Facebook ad with it and that, and put it out there on a couple different cities, and we'll get it posted to the website. The first one is on the website. This one's a little longer than the other one, so. It's kind of funny watching it with no sound. I love this.
Yeah.
This is so cute.
It's gonna be me.
Yeah.
That's the Frontier Army.
Frontier Army, yep.
Right, out of Fort Leavenworth.
Yes.
Buffalo Soldier Monument.
It's actually playing a little slower than when you watch it online, so it's a little Just tried to give an overview of some of the fun things to do in Leavenworth as well, Yeah, it's playing, playing a lot slower, so. No, that's one of the hotels.
Oh, okay.
I think it stopped.
That's okay.
There's a couple more slides, so it stopped. But anyway, you kind of get the idea of it there.
Has this been finalized?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. It has, so I have a copy of it if you'd like, or
How often do you update them?
Not very often, I mean, because they're quite expensive to do. So, I know it had been several years since we had a new video done or whatever, but we can, I had him kind of tweak it here and there and that, so he could probably still make some
Yeah, I just had two suggestions, the Richard Island Culture Center, and as well as some of our outdoor parks.
Right, and that's just the whole thing with trying to
Yeah.
get everything included within a two-minute scope
I got it.
of time, so, yeah, we don't have, don't have time to get everything in there all the time, but, yes, we'll try, I think they're working on one more for us, so.
Yes.
Just some of the marketing updates and that. Our Visitor's Guidebook, of course, is a constant, one of our main pieces that we hand out to everybody. We have placed over 18 ads so far this year. Our online advertising, we've got six digital campaigns running right now. Our social media is running. We have over 6,200 followers between all of them. Our website, we do have our analytics up and running now, so that's great. We can start kind of reporting back on that. Still, top pages that are being viewed are Calendar of Events, the Camp Leavenworth has shown up, and then the United States Prison. And top-referring link right now is still Travel Kansas, and that's mainly where a lot of our online digital campaigns are running through them as well. So, it kind of makes sense that they're our top referral. And then, we also still are doing our e-news little calendar twice a month. This is just a kind of a snapshot of some of the ongoing co-op marketing programs that we're working with. We have Meet Kansas, our KCRDA Campaign, Frontier Military, Northeast Kansas. All of those have your Facebook pages, they all have the social media coverage, they also buy ads. Our I-70 Association, you know, almost spends $50,000 a year on marketing. So, being a part of these, it just kind of stretches your dollar that much farther. So, some of our local information so far this year, we've had 26 group tours so far in 2019, and four of those were overnight tours. We are, have four groups booked for 2020 next year, and we are working on two of those right now, on dates and that, but we have two more, one, two, three, four tours that are going to be overnights. So, that's kind of exciting news. So, I think, you know, they're starting to realize that we have some nice hotels around here again, so. Meetings booked, three meetings in 2019 held here that I actually booked. That's, that's not all, that's just what we've booked and been involved in. One meeting in 2020 is booked, one meeting for 2021, and I've got two outstanding bids right now for hopefully conferences that will be here. Sports, still working with the Sports Kansas Association and that, and the state as a whole is doing really well with hosting a lot of the teams. I know with St. Mary having their 22 adult sporting teams and that, that's going to start bringing in a lot more stuff for us and that. So, I've just got the contact with who to visit with out at State Mary, or St. Mary's and that, to see if we can help in any way with their program, and just, we'll keep diving into where we can go with that. And then, some of our local trends, I was really happy finally to get at least six months' worth of information from the Fairfield, Town Place, Hampton, and Home Two. So, these are finally our stats. I'm not mixing in any other hotels and that. So, as you can see, our occupancy is at 67%. Our ADR, average daily rate, is $110.26, and then our RevPAR here is at 73.84. So, compared to the state, we're way above the state on our, on our
Stats.
on our stats, so pretty happy with that. Revenue then for January through July of this year brought in 5.6 million to the hotels, which equated to about 51,000 rooms. And then, our transient guest tax to us was 352,295, which equated to about 39.9, or 39,939 rooms, which approximately 22% of the room nights sold then are non-transient guest tax, are transient guest tax exempt, which isn't that bad. I mean, I thought it was going to be trending a lot higher, so that's pretty, goes up and down, rollercoastery, too, throughout the year and that, but that's lower than I thought, so it's pretty good.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. So, trade shows again, I've, we're still in the midst of attending some of those. I've listed some of the ones that we've been at. We just got done, we were part of the co-op booth with the Northeast, Northeast Kansas Association for the State Fair, where we handed out a lot of information. We had, we gave away a, a big Um, we had, we gave away a, um, a big old basket for, with Northeast Kansas stuff. Next year, we'll probably go, um, as a, as a city. I'll probably go there and spend a day in the booth, um, with the State Office of Tourism and that. So we've just been really busy with our, uh, our trade shows and attending those. Um, like I said, a couple of other things that we've done then, we've hired our assistant. Hopefully, they'll start, uh, this Thursday, uh, Camp Leavenworth, everyone's talking about it. It's this weekend, it's gonna be really exciting, uh, September twentieth, twenty-first. And like I said, we will be hosting two travel writers on the twenty-fifth and twenty-seventh. Hundredth anniversary of the Veterans Day Parades this year. I know they've got things planned for the whole weekend, not just, uh, Monday. They plan on starting on, um, Friday already, so Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, make it a whole weekend. The hundred and sixtieth anniversary that, uh, Commissioner Griswold mentioned. Um, I'm hoping that something comes about that. I'm sure the state historical, our state, the, um, the Carol Mansion will probably be putting something together for that. And we will get in touch with Saint Mary's and see if there's something we can find out and do with them as well. And then I just wanted to note that, uh, we will be attending the State Tourism Conference, October twenty-first through the twenty-fourth. And we're sponsoring it this year and that, so, um, it's gonna be a, a, a good concert again. It's gonna be down at the Melvorn, um, Casino down there, so, uh, lots of things to see and do down there. And then we are actually, um, going to be submitting a bid to hold that conference in probably twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three. So I'm excited about that. Hopefully, we would get it.
Travel writer one Lisa Gray, is that a local, the local Lisa Gray?
She's actually, oh, no, no, she's not. Yeah, Lisa Gray Water, or Lisa Waterman Gray. Uh, no, this lady's, uh, lives in, um, Overland Park.
Okay. I was wondering.
Yeah, she lives in Overland Park.
I've lost the bubble on this, but in terms of the wayfinding signs, uh, have we found them? I mean, who's, is that, is that Leavenworth Main Street or is that, is that the, is that the city in terms of?
So it is the city.
Who's primarily responsible for making sure that they get created and then placed?
So I was working with Young Sign Company last week to finalize the designs and make sure we have all the arrows pointing in the right directions. And they're gonna start making them.
Okay.
Um, within the month.
Good.
They have to source the metal and all of that, but, um, we are moving forward rapidly with that.
And then once they're done, will the city or city team put, put them in?
No, Young Sign Company will install them for us, uh, since they have that expertise. Um, it's just, uh, best to have them do it, so.
Absolutely.
Um, we know that they're all okay and.
Sure.
Um, I've been working with Wendy with Leavenworth Main Street to make sure that, um, we have all the right attractions on there. And, um, we all drove around for a morning, uh, to all the sign locations, making sure it's the right spot. And I think you're gonna be really pleased with it.
How many are there? Do we, I mean, just approximately?
I think sixteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, good. And, uh, I did wanna, one of the administrative highlights was your graduation from the Leavenworth Lansing Leadership Program.
Oh, yes, yeah, thank you. That was in April, so.
Was that, was that good for you?
It was a good program, yes. I, I think they've got eleven or twelve stus, people signed up this year and that. So, yeah, it's a good program.
Congratulations.
And, uh, yeah, it was, I'm really glad that I attended.
Good.
Well, I just wanna invite everybody out to Camp Leavenworth Festival. It's been a lot of time planning, uh, well-spent money toward this, uh, festival. It's gonna be great. It's gonna bring our community together. Uh, the time's gonna be Friday, September the twentieth, from five to ten P.M. And Saturday, the twenty-first, from eleven A.M. to ten P.M. And there's plenty of bands and.
Pray for good weather.
Pray for good weather, good Lord, amen. It's like a mistake.
I don't think the rain's coming until late Saturday night. I, at least, I think that's the right route. I don't know.
Prayer warriors, we need you here.
No, I don't have anything.
All right, just a couple of things. One, kudos to Assistant City Manager Taylor Tetter, who got, uh, Leavenworth on the federal, uh, Opportunities Zone.
Yeah.
Got the Federal Opportunity Zone that's in Leavenworth onto the state website. Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good. That we now, somebody can click on it from wherever and see that we're an Opportunities Zone. We always were one, but didn't have the, uh, notoriety that it does now, so thank you for doing that. And if any of you have driven on Eisenhower from Fourth Street to Butte Hughes Road, they're working on the sidewalk. Uh, that goes in front of Hallmark and, uh, looks nice. It, what is it, about eight foot wide? I mean, it seems like.
A trail, yeah.
Yeah, it's a trail sidewalk and, uh, I think they'll have it finished by the end of the week, yeah, and it looks good.
And it's a city project, not, not a Hallmark project.
Yeah, many people think it's a Hallmark project, but it is a city project.
Just for those that haven't been keeping up with it, Tenth Avenue is ground down.
It is, yes, it is.
After the equipment breakdown. And I, I don't know when they're gonna start to pay.
Yeah, I don't know if they're gonna start at the end of this week or early next week. I'll, I'll let you know. I just wanna mention that, um, there is some bridge work going on right now. And I know there's a lot of frustration, um, of why didn't they do what they're doing now, two weeks ago on the other project? They were, this is the bi-annual bridge inspection. Just like the city's required to inspect all our bridges every two years, there's a full, comprehensive inspection of the bridge that KDOT does every two years. This was supposed to be done in March, and the reason KDOT couldn't do it was because of the flooding. So this was, um, it's a separate contract. It's an engineering inspection, not a construction project. So they couldn't be co-mingled at the same time where they were working on it. You can't have inspectors inspecting the overall bridge as the bridge is being worked on. So it's unfortunate, but it was the flooding that caused it, um, to be moved to this part. And this is when they were able to get the inspectors who were supposed to come out in March back out. So, um, there is a full closure, the, the first day on the twenty-third, um, from nine A.M. to three P.M. So after the morning rush and before the afternoon, but it'll be the whole day. And then they're gonna do some flagging, um, to get, to finalize the inspection. So, uh, it's inconvenient, but it's work that has to be done.
Just shows Kansas the need for the second bridge.
Yeah.
Well, there's no other comments. Meeting adjourned.